I'm going to call the April 22nd, 2025 Regular Busiree City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for former Councilman Bill O'Rourke, who recently passed away. If you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Maritz is absent. Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Before you are the minutes from the April 1st, 2025 Regular Council Meeting, as well as the April 3rd, 2025 Special Council Meeting. Does anybody have any questions regarding those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve collectively.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion to approve collectively. Both sets of minutes, Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. And granting permission for visitors to speak, we had, we have a pre-requested Mr. White with 10 minutes.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to everyone. On Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, Mr. French from Galleon, Ohio was granted 10 minutes under the granting permission for visitors to speak. Mr. French unleashed a display of vulgar and offensive remarks within this council chamber. These remarks were clearly a violation of the rules of procedure for Busiree City Council, Busiree, Ohio, last updated March 2024. Under A, Citizens' Participation, Sections 4 and 9, yet no one on this council called a point of order. Did this council set a precedence that anyone can speak in the same manner during council committee meetings? After watching the videotape of this type of behavior, most of you were smiling and enjoying this action. Some of you, in my opinion, that you cherished and supported this. Remember, it is all on tape. Even one council member was texting on their phone. Is that a violation of the rules of procedure? Section B, Council Participation, Section 2? Every other individual, including a city employee, were engaging to the audience. That is under A7, under the rules of procedure. No one, again, on this council called point of order. But other times during other council committee meetings, some members called this out multiple times and even screamed this term out. This council can't enforce the rules when you feel like it, or if it benefits you or your narrative. And Mr. DeShawn, I'm disappointed as the chairman of the Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules that you're not speaking up. You even asked me a question while I was sitting in the audience. And members of this council use these rules against me during council meetings. Remember, it's all on tape. It is very clear that this government body, the city of Busiree, has a public records request issue. I have heard many complaints that the letter of the law is not being applied to said request. Matter of fact, I requested public records two months ago, even provided the needed forms for said request. I never got a letter or notice that this was received, or when it would be fulfilled by. I asked about this many times with vague answers. I'm busy, working on other things. The law director didn't talk to you about this, but on April 1st, 2025, I was giving something that didn't, what I didn't request. I was never told that this was broad or narrative within the scope of the law. I was never contacted by anyone by the said requests. So this information was handed to me, and I was told to find it myself. Don't worry, I have a witness to the fact. So the auditor, or maybe some others, didn't want me to find out the issue with the Fire Department overtime. Is that a correlation between sick leave used and more overtime created within the Fire Department? By my request under the law, I or people won't know the true facts about this. What is being hidden by these actions? Is this a contributing factor to the over half million dollars in overtime being paid out to firefighters? How long did you spend printing this out? You wanted to blame others for other things, but you don't want to take responsibility for your duties that you swore to? The hiding of information is not the best plan of action. Heck, the water fund, your training under the FIA laws, telling council the money's there? When this type of overt, conscious, and immoral behavior is going to stop? Is the Fire Department issue about money or manpower? Money. Most of them are making between $85,000 and $100,000 a year. Yes, with overtime. That's better than most cities our size. Now let's talk about manpower. Why can't we hire part-time personnel to fill these duties? The $8,000 to outfit these firefighters is too high. The city has over 20 Marx radios, six people on shift, and it doesn't add up. The cost of gear, if you want to find out, is about $4,000 a person, maybe $4,500 with two sets of duty uniforms. So by adding 21 part-time firefighters, okay, seven people assigned to a shift, could cost $94,500, not $168,000 for gear. Instead of paying $35 an hour overtime, which is about $840 for a 124-hour shift, or $1,680 for two overtimes. One part-timer would cost you $360 for 24 hours. Or $720 for two, or even three, for $1,080 per shift. That would give you a three-man engine crew, both EMS vehicles stocked with, employed with two people each. You'd actually save money by having seven firefighters on duty per shift. Remember, these are just project, projective figures, and the city could also save money on benefits and everything else on these people. Now about the budget. Why is the city still on the red? Mr. Myers, I will agree with you that the administration can spend, or not spend, monies within a budget line item. But you, as the chairman, and who have been on Finance Committee for six-plus years, should know the state requires city council to finalize a budget by April 1st of each year. Today is April 22nd. Do we have a balanced budget? Have not seen one yet. You didn't allow the public to see or have any meetings on the proposed budget before it was passed. The state of Ohio requires that expenditures do not exceed the availability of, available of revenues, that appropriations are within those limits. Ensure financial responsibility and balanced budgets. Expect to manage their financial responsibility and avoid deficits. Yet the city is still in a disarray on all of this. This council is giving out raises without due to our budget deficits. Retroactive pay back to January 1, 2025, that costs, that's costly to the taxpayers in the budget. No cuts have been mentioned yet in this budget. What are you waiting on? I know, the street levy. Once again, the waiting game. Hanging things over the taxpayers again. We won't, we won't take this if you pass this. Now you have two council members who want to raise the income tax against the working class of Busiree. Plus, we still have the police and fire buyout money that's still not in the budget. That's an expenditure. When are you going to address the issues? Are you going to make the taxpayers pay for this too? I know by the former words, "We will have to rob Peter to pay Paul." It's, it is time now to make cuts in all areas of government body. Not just against one side, but it's to everyone, fair and equal on both sides. These are not going to be easy, but during hard times, people need and can make tough decisions, and that can act upon these issues. Not play the waiting game. Plain and simple, you can do the job that the people elected you to do, or not. In closing, the comment after the Special Council Meeting, Special Council Meeting, the last one. There was a comment made about the former law director, what I, in my opinion, was uncalled for and very disrespectful. The other note that I'd like to say tonight is, April 20th through the 26th is National Volunteer Week. Thanks to all the volunteers, to everyone who volunteers out there, including my brothers and sisters and the firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics who serve their communities. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Please state your name and address.
Roger Rush, 1416 Michigan Drive, Busiree, Ohio. Here to talk about a water bill I just got, on the water subject. It was, some of them are 12, 13 years old. One of them's for 75 cents. I've addressed this before with the Water Department. Actually, I was talking to Denny about two, three, four, five years ago. Whenever he was Service Director, I got a water shut off for a dollar. It was a bill I never got, because I asked what address they sent it to. They sent it to my house. I've had a PO box for 30 years. So I never got the bill, but then I had to go through all that debris for a dollar. Now I got 75-cent bill that's five years old. I've got a $5 bill that's 13 years old. I looked up the Ohio statute for limitation for bills, and it's six years. You guys want to take time to send out bills that are 13, 12 years old? For minuscule amounts of money? And then I actually, you know, when I contacted them, they says, "Well, you gotta pay it." That's all there is to it. And they says, "We really don't care whether you pay it or not. We just work here." I'm saying, "How can you send these bills that I never received 13 years later?" Because I don't trust your accounting too much. You got a million dollars floating around somewhere, give or take $100,000, that you still haven't straightened out yet, but you know for sure that I owe you 75 cents. So that's the big complaint I've got for now. I've paid everybody else's water bills for years. I have rentals. Every time a person leaves, they, you know, give me a huge water bill at the end of the thing, and I gotta pay it. And I pay them. But what, where have these bills been for all these years? I thought they shut the water off after, you know, just a couple days, if you don't pay a bill. Yet I got bills that are 13 years old. Then they threaten to shut my water off. You gotta pay these, or you're gonna shut your water off and not turn it on for any reason. Right when I was up there complaining about it, there's an elderly lady there. She had one that was a year and a half old. She just couldn't understand it. She had her checkbook, fumbling through it, going, "You know, I paid all these bills. You gotta pay it," is what they told her. She says, "Give me my checkbook back." She walked out, same time I did.
Do you want to make your response, Mr. Service Director, or Law Director, to Mr. Rush?
This is the first time I've heard about Mr. Rush's.
It's the first I've heard about it as well.
The whole city didn't get these? They act like they held them out there, buddy. They did at least one other lady that was there complaining at the same time I was.
It's something we can look into.
Yeah.
But it's the first time we're here.
I haven't heard about it either.
Yeah, I just got it two, three days ago, Friday, I think. Anyway, like I say, I pay every bill I get, but I can't pay the ones I don't get. And I don't intend to pay one that's 13 years old that I never got.
Did they charge you light fees on it?
No, they don't even tell you what they're for. The bill just says, you know, "From this month to this month on this year, and you owe $5.60." Don't sell how much water you used, or for sewer. I've had this before. My house, my rental sense empty for a day or two before I put somebody else in. There's a stormwater fee. That's probably what that 75 cents is. I'm guessing that was for a day or two the water was off. But they never sent me a bill for it. They never put it on my renters bill. They never put it on my bill. But they'll bring it up years later. So I ain't too happy about it in any rate.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to Communications and Petitions, and we have Mr. Timberlake from the Crawford Partnership.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. And how much time can I take here? I did something similar last night in Crestline. Took me about 20 minutes.
That's fine.
Thank you. And given that, you know, I'd say ask questions when you want, and we can, we can speed up if, if that's needed. But I'm Greg Timberlake. I'm the interim director. Sarah Hurley, who presented last, resigned in February. I took over just a week or two before she resigned. And I'm interim until we hire a new full-time director. I didn't want the full-time position. I retired from North Central State College Dean out at the Key House Center for a number of years. Live on the western edge of Richland County. They're kind of close to 30 and 314. And I had a similar position last year when Jody Perry was elected mayor of Mansfield. They asked me, the board asked me to be the interim director there, and I did that until they, for a few months, till they hired. So this is the second time around for me, and it's, you know, it's just awesome meeting all the good people that I'm meeting and seeing the work I get done. I have two major themes, but, but cover four topics, really. I want to start, oh dear. Here we go. Tommy? And, oh, maybe it's just a fire. Yeah. Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
So since I've been here, we've had two large meetings where someone wants to lease a building. The GE building is one example, and another company, so you can advance any time you get there. And another company wanted to build out a crossroads. And I wanted to show you all what the presentation we do for those events is. It's pretty complicated. It's pretty interesting, and, and it'll give you a little bit of insight. The GE building right now is kind of hard to get a lot of interest in because it's so big, and it's aging, and we hope the owner, Phoenix, out in Arizona, will fix it up a little bit. Cross, the crossroad site is a beautiful site. It's the best site in the county for development. And, and as we go through this, you'll see why. So I suspect that that site will fill pretty quickly, and once it, I mean, I don't know what quickly means. It's been 16 years, but, but it'll go, and, and then the county really doesn't have another good site after that, at this point. Yeah, and I think we can skip that, Tommy. That's the agenda they would see. So imagine in the room, you have a big room. You have the owner's team coming in, maybe three, four people. You have city employees from the water crew. You have AEP in the room, a person. You have Columbia Gas in the room. You have people from RGP, Regional Growth Partnership. Does everyone know what they are, pretty much? So, okay, so they're part of Jobs Ohio. They're in our quadrant of the state. They're really expert in leasing details, financing, that kind of thing. And then you have, I'm there, they keep politicians out. Generally, Jobs Ohio has that, the, the, they, they say it gets too, it gets too political when elected officials are in the room. And then, and then if you find out where, where else they're looking, then those elected officials get into battles with each other. So this is the way companies can maintain anonymity. We have to file the NDA and be quiet about it. So, yeah, I'll go ahead. So this is the site overview. 15,000 an acre, 22 acres, that's what they were looking at. There are 48 acres left. There are 45 that are rentable, leasable, buildable, viable, whichever way they want to go. And let's move ahead, Tommy. Yeah. See, these slides are neat. It shows Route 30 right there, so the company can build, back their trucks in, hop onto Route 30, and get their goods somewhere. And this is just, you know, these kind of pictures are good for people from out of town. They, they look pretty good. Shows the, this is, we show them how long it takes to get to the 71 north-south, 75, and they need to know that. So, and we tell them, you know, we'll pull up a map and say, "Here's how long it takes to get you to the east coast." Doug Lou told his trucks could get to Boston in one day from, from the fiber place. Then they, they always want to know where the airports are, so we show them that. This is the local presentation. I, keep going, Tommy. We're good. Now, this is, this is kind of interesting. So this is where Gary started, Frank House, in, in, you know, 2016, 2018, in there. So the, the archaeological survey, site designation, all this stuff has to get done ahead of time. And I think there, is there another slide on that?
It's the ownership.
Yeah. Well, we'll have more on site, what it takes to get it designated, ready. But site ownership, this is critical. Who owns the property? Who's selling it? How long will it take to sell? So the owners want to know that, and this, this gives them that kind of information. And it's usually me, or, you know, someone like Sarah, who's delivering this part of the, the discussion. And then this is a great map. It shows how, how the city has put the utilities almost pretty much wrapped around the site, so when someone buys it, the hookup expenses are less than they'd be almost anywhere else because the, the utilities are, are pretty much in place. AEP jumps in at this point, and they talk, they will talk to the leaser, the owners, about, about power, and they'll answer questions about if they need more power, what will it cost to bring it in, et cetera. Richland County does our permitting in this county, but Mike, the last one we did, I think the last two, Mike handled, from the city, Mike handles the, the discussion of permitting. I got his name right, Tommy, right?
Yeah, Mike Keefe.
Yeah, thank you. And we can, we can go on. And this is where, this is where Regional Growth Partners come in. So the owner, if you're building, if you want to build a building, or if you're thinking of the GE building, you want to bring equipment in, and you want to, you'll want to hire people. So you, as the owner, have to know how many people you're gonna end up hiring, and how much money are you gonna end up spending? And then the Jobs Ohio people and the Regional Growth Partnership people can start, get their calculators out and, and figure out how, how the incentives will work. So the more you invest in, in your business, in, in your city in this case, or the county, the more tax incentives you get from the state, and potentially larger amount locally. The highlights, I tried to abbreviate it here a little bit. The highlights for that are, it takes a long time to get its site ready. It takes a lot of work. We have 48 acres that are shovel-ready, ready to go when someone buys them, and that's in the crossroads. My hunch is, in the county, right now, as I see it as an outsider, the next likely place would be 61 and 30. So I imagine at some point, that's going to be an area, if you look countywide. So, you know, again, it goes back to Gary's work on getting the 30 corridor going, and the other counties around us, and, you know, helping think that way. But that's really the key because of the highway transportation. Any questions on, on that side? The other way we come in, I won't go here right now, but that's okay to leave it there. The other way we come in on this is we get things called RFIs from the state of Ohio. And these are often, we want, the company says, "We want 200,000 square feet. We need 25 feet ceiling height. We need 10 acres. We need access to highway in 10 minutes. We need," you know, the list goes on. So then we pull up our database, and we, we have a database of all the buildings that are available in the county, and the property available in the county. And then we match. If I have a question, I'll call people like, Joe Dugan owns a lot of property. I'll call him and say, "Would this fit into your place?" Or the spec building in Galleon, or buildings here, too. So we'll talk and, and see, and then if it matches, we'll submit those. And we probably get three or four of those every month in the two months I've been here. All right, this, this one's pretty interesting. This is just a little touch of what a joint economic development district, or a, what's the other one? Community cooperative economic development area. So these are opportunities for municipalities to get into an agreement with a township, and then investments that come in on the borders usually could, could be taxed. So if a company came in just on the edge of your city, for instance, built, and then the employees there didn't have to pay taxes because they're just outside of the city, the, if you had an agreement with the township, then you could figure out how to tax in that agreement and, and share the tax with the township. So that, that's a possibility. It, it can be useful in going forward in future planning, and it can be useful for existing situations, as I understand it. So Sarah left a note on the desk, and, and just, I've talked to every mayor in the county except New Washington, and we're meeting the solicitor tomorrow, so I'll be chatting with him on that. But I've talked to the mayors. I've talked to people like Tommy in the different cities and villages. And I emailed on Friday every township person and gave them a handout on this JED/SETA thing. We have an attorney who will, is willing to come in and talk to governmental officials, and just give the facts about how it can be used, how to, how to go about applying it in your situation, answer questions, and then, so I'll be inviting him to come up from Columbus and speak. And he wants to limit it to governmental elected people or governmental-appointed people. So I'm gonna respect that, but it would seem that city councils would be welcome to that also, as elected, if you're interested. So look forward, look forward to that. I, I don't know how to figure out what's best for everyone to come, so I'm gonna have to pick a date and a time and do it, but I'll try, I'll try to do it at times at work. Any questions on the JED and the SETA? Yeah, go ahead.
Are you gonna send a sheet or some email when the date and time you pick?
Well, yeah, I could go ahead and get the city and village council emails that way, or I could ask, yeah, I'll, I'll do it that way. I'll get those emails. Trying to think.
Are you leaning towards the JED or a SETA?
Pardon?
Are you leaning towards the JED or the SETA?
Well, the JED seems easier, but I'm not an expert on it. It's, when I talk to people, they talk more about the JED. I'm not sure why. It, maybe it's worded a little more clearly? So, did I answer that?
Yes.
The contact will get you on the list. So I'm pretty excited about that one. See, it can come in useful if you go back. I know it's not Busiree, but if you go back to the to the thirty-one, I mean, through thirty and the sixty-one crossing, it's, you have four quadrants where the roads cross. Crestline has water going across thirty into one of them, so they have a certain amount of dibs on that quadrant, if you will. Galleon has water going into another quadrant. A township has one of the quadrants, you know, just, and then Crestline has one of the quadrants south of thirty. So, whatever happens out there is likely going to need some kind of agreement like that. And I imagine there are places around here where it can work. Like I've talked to, I've thought in my head that crossroads across the railroad tracks on the east side of the crossroads, I believe that's township property. So, if, if crossroads ever wanted to get a little bigger, maybe they could get utilities under the railroad and, and have access to that, that land over there. All right, so next one. So, then I wanted to go into this a little bit, too. This is our one-point-five-million EPA Brownfield grant. This is for the whole county. And Bucyrus and Crestline and us, the partnership, are the, are the three partners of that coalition, according to the signed grant documents. Our staff member, Ashley Shawes, did this, this PowerPoint, and she will manage the project mostly. So, one-point-five-million approved last May. We, we didn't have our, am I running out of time? Should I speed it up?
Here you go.
Okay. So, we, we didn't have the right accounting measures for a federal grant, so our board had to change to different accounting standards. That took a couple, three months. And then leadership changes, we had to change papers, paperwork over that. But we're about ready to get our RFQ out, and then we can hire a consultant, and the consultant does most of the work you'll see here. And, and then we manage it, do the reporting, and, and work with that consultant. Project goals are pretty simple. I'm not going to walk over there and read them. It's really to take Brownfield, like an old gas station, like the Swan Building, and have, our grant is for two phases. First phase is to identify up to forty, forty-five properties in the county that are likely to be in need of remediation. We do a little background work on all those sites. That's phase one. Phase two, you begin to test half of those sites, the sites that are most interesting to the community. You bring in community people in each area, you talk about which ones they'd like to see worked on. So, you whittle it down to about twenty sites that will then actually get testing to see what the environmental damage to that property is. And then you whittle it down a little bit more, down to, I don't remember the number exactly, I think ten, five to ten, that you'd start remediation plans on. So, so then you have, you have a core group you want to fix, and you've got broad community input in that, and then you apply for the next EPA grant at the end of this one. And that's where you would get the money to actually clean up some or all of those core projects that it got whittled down to. So, these are the three, we call them the priority sites, and they were determined by, in part by rules that the EPA put out on what kind of part of the towns they're in. So, Swan Rubber is, is the site that's a priority site that was picked for Bucyrus, New Washington, the Hyler Gas Station, Crestline. We think it was an old golf, golf station on East, East Main. All right, I think I've explained that. Is there anything? I think I've gone over most of this. Yeah, mine will just look at the budget. So, it's hard, you can probably see it on your, but administration support, under twenty-nine-thousand over four years, I'm starting on this zero. Total one-point-five-million site inventory assessment, that's phase one, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. So, the consultant's company pretty much gets all this one. Reuse planning, four-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, and then outreach to get those community meetings going, twenty-five-thousand. What else did I want to say about that there? So, when we get the RFP, we submit it, and companies will then, will then send in a response to that and the coalition members. And we want to add, we want to get someone from New Washington onto that group to help us in decision-making. So, they would, that, that group would pick the company that matches the RFP or Q the most closely. Any questions there? I think all I have left is, I think we can go to the next one, Tommy. Thank you. Yeah, skip that, I'm all right. Skip that. So, this is just Lisa. So, I've talked a little bit about Ashley's work, EPA, she also does CDBG, and Nancy's work. Nancy, you know, is in her, she does the, just the office management kinds of things and manages our budget, tries to manage people like me, and she does the Turk books. I think she does other, some other, but she, she manages some of the tax initiative bookkeeping as well. So, this is Lisa's portfolio, if you will, and she's paid eighty-five or ninety percent, I believe, from the WIOA funds. So, she's the workforce person. She organizes wage tours for the high school teachers every year. They go visit companies, they see how the companies are working, the companies tell them how much they pay people for different jobs. And the idea then is that our teachers, when they're in the classroom with students, have some knowledge about what's going on in the workforce and can talk to students about their aptitudes and, and what they might want to think about as they're growing older. She works with all the school districts in the county on workforce ideas, helping robotics classes. Get into Bucyrus High School has been a big effort lately, the teacher boot camps. So, just a lot, and I think there's another slide next, Tommy. Tech credit, this might be hard to see. What are, what are Bucyrus, Bucyrus City Schools have gotten about sixty-thousand dollars in tech cred? Anyone else in Bucyrus? Eagle Crusher uses a lot. Worms Woodworking has gotten some money. This, this is money that really could be used more. If you, you could be using it in City Hall to train people, to upskill them on software. If you have new software coming in and you want to upskill them, you can do it that way. Robotic training, that's what a lot of companies use it for. But Lisa helps companies get tech cred. And the way it goes is, if I own a company and I have an employee and I want to get them to learn how to use a piece of new equipment, I pay for the training, and then I submit my form to Ohio Tech cred and get reimbursed. So, that way, that employee has to pass and be successful before there's a, so that's some of the flavor of the work that Lisa's doing. Sorry, I didn't look that way. So, any questions? That's all I got. Yeah?
First off, I want to thank you. In my seven years on council, I think that's probably the best presentation I've seen from your organization, and I really, truly think that's because you were here to educate us tonight. You weren't here to try to dog and pony show us, and I want to, you know, let you know that I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's evident that you care, and I think everybody from your organization has always shown that they care, I'm not saying that. But it's very evident that you care about the job you're doing, even though it's most likely a short-term job.
Yeah.
So, thank you. A question I want to ask, and you might not have the answer, you know, you're newer to this.
Yeah.
But for sixteen-ish years now, we've heard, we've got this site, it's food and beverage-ready, best site out there.
Oh, yeah.
What are we doing wrong, but that is still a vacant piece of land? Or is there something that we as a city are doing wrong, or something we're not doing? Or is it just sheer bad luck that every time it's considered, it's, somebody goes somewhere else?
You know, one of the things, in my opinion, two things would help. And I asked, and the company that last looked is still in fall, so they're not a no yet. They, they said they want to decide by May first. I think now it's going to take a little longer, but, so that game's still on. But there are two things that I've thought of, and I talked to Doug Lou told about it. One is, there's no place in town we can bring people that's big enough to have the big meeting afterward. And I, I said to Doug, if we could get our basement conference room, have you ever been there? If we could get that fixed up so it looked better, I, I think we could bring people into town. And then when we're taking breaks, they could get out, they could, that's a pretty town. They could walk down to Castle Coin Shop, they could get a cup of coffee at Pel, buy someone back home something at the Pelican. So, that's a, to me, you know, I, I just love walking up and down Main Street when I'm, when I need to get out and walk, and I think that would be an attraction. Doug thinks that makes some sense. We had to take them to Pickwick last time, put them in a big, huge room and kind of screen it off. Once we, we had one in GE Building, you know, and, so I think that's part of it. The other is that what's really hurt us is this, all this talk about not enough workforce. So, when people see that we're out, really in the middle of the country, they worry that they're not going to get the employees. And that's probably a pretty darn hard one. The narrative around that has to change, and, and I, I tried to stress it when the newest one was here. I don't think we hit it strong enough before, but shoot, I come twenty-three minutes, twenty-three miles to get to the office in twenty-three minutes. I mean, that's a pretty darn easy commute.
I think one of the things you can put into your, your bookbag to help with that argument is we've got over seventeen-hundred of our city residents that leave town to go work elsewhere. And I know they do that because of pay.
Yes.
So, if we're bringing in, you know, high-quality companies that are having good, high-paying jobs, I think a large majority of those people would very, if it fits within their, their scope of their profession, would choose to stay here. I know.
They can bring that up.
Yeah.
We do bring it up.
Okay.
And I try, I just think we have to hit that one harder than we have in the past. And I think if we get a place downtown where we could have the meeting and they would have the privacy, it would make living in the country look more attractive. The other thing, and I wanted to thank you for your first comment about the presentation. It occurred to me that this stuff has been secret too long.
You know, I understand why there's something you just can't come in here and tell us.
Yeah.
You can't come in and say, X, Y, Z company's thinking about coming here.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons, you can't.
Yeah.
But I do feel like we never know anything at all until way after the fact, oh, well, we missed out on seven opportunities over the last seven years, and, you know, what could we have done differently? That's, I think that's from our seats where we need to focus more, what couldn't we do to help?
I appreciate.
Have that not be a vacant piece of land any longer.
Yeah. Great questions. Any other questions?
Yeah, so when you get active feedback, I don't know if this has been happening. I haven't seen it as a resident, but I'm Clarissa, by the way, we've been, we've been, we've been messaging, emailing, yeah. What I see is that when we are passed up, is there any sort of feedback on why? Do they give us, is there like a questionnaire of why, anything like that, that ever gets?
No. Have you ever heard anything, Tommy?
The last one, the main company decided not to do anything. They were looking at four different sites, and they decided not to do anything. So, the one's the GE, the, it's not working out. I'm hearing more of that because I've worked out there also. It's just not laid out right for them, is most of the GE feedback I'm getting.
Yeah, I was just curious if that, moving forward, if that's like a policy that can be implemented as trying to get active feedback, so there's maybe changes that we can make if it's something like a policy or a, you know, stat.
You know, I'll tell you the truth, I don't know if we've ever asked RGP that question. We might have, but just asking RGP the question might get us a new answer.
It would almost feel like losing an employee, you know, having an exit interview.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, usually it's just, they're, they're picking between four sites, and they pick one, and tough, tough to the others. We're busy, we're moving on. That's it? Any, anything else? Thank you all very much. I have my email on there, and feel free to reach out. Thank you. Would love it. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on. Standing committee reports, plating committee, Mr. Me.
No reports.
Any questions for plating committee?
No.
Public lands and buildings committee, Ms. Sherrick.
No reports this time.
Any questions for public lands and buildings? Health and safety, Mrs. DeShawn.
No report.
Any questions for health and safety? Economic development, Mr. Hickman.
No report.
Any questions for economic development?
Finance.
Can you skip finance?
Okay. Wrapping up, the any questions for Mr. Hickman, we'll continue on to finance committee, Mr. Myers.
Nothing reported this time.
Any questions for finance committee? Service committee would be?
Sherrick.
Ms. Sherrick.
Nothing at this time.
Any questions for service committee?
I do have a question. Have we, the, it's been brought to my attention that when I provided edits for the, the meeting on Thursday, the committee meetings on Thursday, that I may have an outdated version of the nine hundred. I used the one that was in the last packet, so is that not the right one? Do we?
Chris was getting a few other things fixed, and so, yeah.
Right.
That was the one from the last.
The right copy has big red letters that say, "Master Copy."
Okay. Well, that's never, that was not in the packet for the first April meeting?
And Chris did not email it to all of us. Just.
You had a?
I do not.
You had a? Chris has it.
He's the only one that has a master copy?
Yeah. We're only keeping one master copy because the other one got screwed up and went ten different ways to twenty different people.
And it still didn't go to all the people.
So, the one, that's what I think is very confusing, because I spent a lot of time going through and editing, and I was working off of the information that was in the last council packet. So, if that's not the right information, that's disingenuous to the public, but also to the body itself. So, I'm not very comfortable with there being a master copy just with one individual when we don't, how can we?
Yeah, last I knew, we had all requested that we at least have the committee see where we were at.
That's very frustrating. It makes it hard to prepare.
I, and it was being emailed to us, and that was as far as it went.
Okay.
So, hopefully Mr. Muritz cannot give that to us.
Any other questions for service committee? Seeing non-special ad hoc committee for rules of procedure, Mrs. DeShawn.
We're still waiting on draft legislation for rules of procedure and codified ordinance chapters one-one-one and one-one-three. End of my report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc committee? Special ad hoc committee for property maintenance, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc committee? Special ad hoc committee for zoning map, again, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Traffic commission, Mr. Starr.
Nope. No report.
Any questions for a traffic commission?
I do have a
I do have a note. I guess it's not a question, it's more of a note. So pardon me, because it's the first time I've had anything come up from a resident, but there was a concern, and I believe it was Arrowhead Drive, where there was a request for a speed sign to be reviewed. Do I need to forward that information to you? How would?
Probably got a phone call on that today.
Okay.
So I'm looking into it.
Okay. Do I ask it?
Any other questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none, need a motion to accept committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, and Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I have both, sorry, aye.
Report of City Officers. With the mayor's report, I guess Mr. Starr is going to be giving that.
Yeah, the Arbor Day Foundation named Bussiris, the 2024 Tree City.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, I'm sorry about that.
Honor of its committee to plant, grow, and maintain trees that benefited Bussiris. Those in attendance that accept the award was Jeff Panovich, Mary Lee Minor, and Alan Fox. The administration met with Omni Fiber to view the list, the punch list to complete repairs to landscape. Omni Fiber will also be presenting new plans to, for continuing expansion of their service within the city of Bussiris. Administration had met with Brightspeed Attorney Go, and Attorney Gro, Gobrick will be reviewing the agreement between the city of Bussiris and Brightspeed. Administration, along with Crawford County Partnership, toured Diamond Whites. This was led by General Manager Carl Cole. Bussiris is very fortunate to have a wide array of products produced here, from eyeglass wipes, leather cleaner, to disinfection, disinfection whites. Thank you, Diamond Whites, for your continued support of Bussiris and her employees.
Any questions for the mayor's report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Safety Service Director's report. Again, Mr. Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had applied for some grant money related to mosquito controls throughout Ohio EPA. The funding we applied for is going to direct towards breeding sources reduction through funding of the community tire collection event. Unfortunately, our application was not selected for funding. The property owned at 417 Wallace Avenue enquired about purchasing the vacant city lot owned, or lot of 411 Wallace. Their intentions is unknown, but the lot does meet developmental standards. If the, someone would like to buy the house on the lot, put, or like to put a house on the lot, it could be put out to bid or transferred to the CIC and sold. And then the park will be officially open in this weekend.
Okay, any questions for the Service Director?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Myers.
Would it be possible to reach back out to the property under 417 Wallace and see if they might share their intentions with you to help us? If they, if they want to put a house on it, then I think that's great, that we could facilitate that through the CIC. Otherwise, I would suggest that if they just want to have a bigger yard, I'd put it out to bids and we'd get somebody who could put a, put a house on it. Yeah, I'll reach out.
That's also in Public Lands and Buildings already through the whole, all of the properties the city owns, so you guys could talk about that more on Thursday. Any other questions for the Service Director?
Yeah, I have a question. It's mentioning CIC, is that through, would that be funded also through economic, is CIC economic development?
CIC is its own.
Entity.
Right.
Thing which was formed probably through economic development, but it doesn't function in economic development anymore. It kind of functions on its own. But it hasn't met for probably five years.
Yeah, this was kind of confusing. I know that was an issue at one point, so I didn't know if.
Um, so nothing further with the Safety Service Director's report. We will move on to, does the Law Director have a report?
I do. After events that transpired today, I'd like to have an executive session pursuant to revised Code 121.22G3.
So do you want to, when we do this executive session that's already on agenda, do we want to mention G3 and G4? That way it's all done at one executive session?
Doesn't make a difference to me.
Okay, I'll just make a note of that here. Okay, any other, anything else, Mr. Law Director?
Nope.
Uh, any questions for the Law Director? Seeing none. Auditors' report, Ms. Lewis.
The closing of the general obligation bond occurred on April 16th, 2025. The city received the $1,050,000 into our depository account, the results of which you will see reflected in the detailed trial balance for part of the beginning of May. On March 31st, 2025, the city of Bussiris received notification that we were awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. The letter congratulated stating, "We are pleased to notify you that your annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, has met the requirements to be awarded GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting." The GFOA established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize the individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations again on having satisfied the high standards of the program. Our independent third-party auditors, Clark Schaefer and Hackett, which are contracted through the State Auditor's Office, were in the office this month for preliminary fieldwork. Things are going smoothly. One of the main concerns is Bussiris's lack of city policies. Up until now, the city of Bussiris has relied heavily on falling back onto what the ORC states, but we should have specific policies in place that reiterate those points and are more tailored to how our city functions, particularly personnel policies, departmental policies, IT policies, conflict, sorry, conflict of interest policies, and et cetera. For referrals to finance, the appropriation of $14,529 for the state Fire Marshal's Equipment Grant, which we were awarded, and to all committees, the creation of policies.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Myers.
I'd like to ask, uh, maybe the question of whether it be the Law Director or the auditor. Do you believe that rather than referring the policy creation to each individual committee, that an ad hoc committee might be more up the right alley?
We had kind of discussed that, so what our auditors had kind of referred to us is to look at a similar city. So I've been kind of going through the policies of a similar city, rewriting them, that I was going to pass them on to the Law Director to kind of go over. It's, I, it's up to you guys if you think an ad hoc would be the best vehicle for that.
How is this not an administrative function that the administration would handle without council's involvement?
Because I asked our auditors, and they said that it would be something that council has to approve.
This is true.
But to Mr. Fankhauser's question, I think the administration could create them as what you're doing now, and then present them to us for approval as councils as a whole, and then we wouldn't need even an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Could do that, too.
That does sound like an easier path. So we do need a referral for the $14,529 to the state Fire Mar, for the state Fire Marshal's Equipment Grant to finance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That has been referred to finance. Any other questions for the auditor?
I have a question. Given some feedback that I've been receiving from residents, I'm curious to, trying to think how to word this the best way. I'm curious if there's been review of what, what we will lose if the levy doesn't pass in numbers, like financially, I believe, I think it was stated previously, like 1.7 million, correct?
Um, we budgeted 1.75 million. Last year, we brought in 1.8.
Okay. So if, and that goes directly into the street and services, or Street Services Fund, correct?
Yes, it goes to fund projects, materials and supplies, a portion could be used for engineering for those projects.
Okay. And that can't be used anywhere else because of GAAP policies, correct?
Um, that actually can't go to personal services because it was written that way in the original legislation that put the street levy on the ballot.
Okay. And if that money doesn't come through, what, what, I'm sure you've probably done this in your official capacity, looking at suggestions for cuts, or where would that money come from? Like, how could that, where would the money come from if that portion was lost, the 1.7 million?
So we would significantly cut any kind of projects that were ongoing. We would cut any kind of, anything to materials and supplies, we'd have to obviously cut engineering. We would also be relying heavily then on just the gasoline excise tax and registration fees, which we're budgeting this year to be about $650,000 and $80,000. So any projects that would need to be done, that would take priority. What would we be left over could go toward personnel possibly, so we're probably looking at layoffs in personnel as well.
Okay, so the, basically, from what I'm hearing is that you're stating that the gasoline and the registration fees, those can be used for personnel, but the way that the levy has been reaffirmed in the past is that it's always being used for material and projects more than it can't be used for personnel.
Yes.
So that would directly, basically, that would directly remove, move the funding from personnel to, if a project needs done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then would, would the, I mean, I know our general fund is already taxed, so what would that, would we have money in the general fund, or?
Our general fund currently is already fairly strained. What, I mean, the two heavy hitters in that fund are police and fire. If we had to, I mean, you can transfer general fund money, say there was a street project that absolutely had to get done, we could transfer that money from the general fund to the street fund, then it would put more pressure on the general fund, resulting in potential cuts for police and fire and other, City Hall, things like that as well.
Okay. And I know a lot of people, the feedback that I'm getting from citizens is that they're worried that, they're worried about the tax credit, the out-of-town tax credit, but if, let's say this happened, and there was a big push, you know, that doesn't pass, so they're like, well, we're just going to take the whole credit. I'm not saying that's what I want, I'm just saying that this is a concern people are having. I, I think I saw if you take the whole credit, it's like 1 million, so you would still be short 700, 800,000 dollars still, so that would still be significant cuts. Okay. All right, that's my question, thank you.
Any other questions for the auditor? Seeing none, we're going to move on to a Treasurers' Report dated March 2025. And I think we could just hold off and accept that, all these as a whole, so we won't have a vote on that until then.
I'm going to change that to accept and file the officers' reports, because that has to be filed as part of the motion.
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Gobrik.
Uh, Chief Ostenheimer is not here, but he asked me to read the report.
Okay, we're still discussing the Treasurers' Report. I do agree with you, Aaron, if we do it this way, we could put on here motion to accept and file.
All the reports.
All the city officers' reports.
That would be perfectly filed with me.
Okay, so that's going to take care of that. So, okay, now, Mr. Gobrik, what, what do you have for the police chief?
Thank you. This is Chief Ostenheimer's report. In the, in March of 2025, Bussiris Police Officers were involved in a total of 843 incidents. There were nine, 190 traffic stops in which 12 tickets were issued. Of the tickets, eight were driving, or were driving under suspension. Seven people were arrested for operating a vehicle while intoxicated, and officers made six felony drug arrests. Officers responded to 19 domestic calls, zero overdoses, one assault, 20 traffic crashes, five private property crashes, 33 vehicle lockouts, and 14 larceny complaints. Dispatchers handled 14 emergency medical dispatch calls. On February 26th, Bussiris Police Department officers responded to 421 East Mansfield Street for a stabbing complaint. Officers located a victim bleeding from a knife wound to his upper leg. The victim was transported by Bussiris Fire Department to the hospital for treatment. Joseph Dibert was arrested for felonious assault. On March 19th, Bussiris Police Department detectives and officers served a search warrant at 122 and a half West Mary Street. The warrant resulted in the seizure of fentanyl and crack cocaine. Mike Hickman was arrested for drug trafficking and possession of drugs. On March 21st, Bussiris Police Department Officer Connor took a report for burglary at 122 and a half West Mary Street. His investigation led to the arrest of Chris Cox, who was later indicted for burglary, a second-degree felony. On March 24th, Bussiris Police Department detectives and officers conducted a search warrant on 623 Eastern Sillier Street. The warrant resulted in felony drug seizures. Carl Van Buskirk and Jessica Suter were arrested for drug possession. On March 27th and 28th, Bussiris Police Officers participated in a Metrich drug interdiction operation, and that was countywide. The operation was successful with a total of 153 traffic stops, five felony drug arrests, one seized firearm, five people arrested on active warrants, and two people connected to, uh, treatment resources for drug addiction. On a personal note, I will be retiring from the Bussiris Police Department on May 30th, 2025. It has been my pleasure to serve this city for the last 25 years. Chief Neil Ostenheimer. End of his report.
Any questions about that to the Law Director?
Not a question, I just wanted to thank Chief Ostenheimer for everything that he's done for the city. He's always been a wonderful public servant, servant, and I personally am very grateful for him.
Okay. We're going to move on then to the Fire Chief has a March 2025 run report. And we'll just ask for a motion to accept and file all of the city officers' reports collectively.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. We have accepted all of the officers' reports and filed them. Visitors' input regarding reports of standing slash special committees and of city officers. Is there any visitors' input? Not seeing any.
Excuse me, sir. I didn't mention my presentation of the water guys at the, uh...
Hey, you got to come up to them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Drake Timberlake, and I, I had a slide, and I took it out, but the, everyone wants to know about the water coming in and the sewer going out, and how much it's going to cost, and, and can it be done, and this and that. And the city's water guys always answer the, the questions really well. The engineer, Dylan, stands by and does his job, too. So sorry, that seemed appropriate for the city services. Sorry about that, thank you.
Okay, any other visitors' input? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislative... Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Mr. President?
Mrs. DeShawn?
On proposed ordinance 23-2025? Which deals with repealing ordinance 46-96? Dealing with snow, street removal? That? Piece of legislation at our last Health and Safety Committee? The legislation was asked for, but it was specified that the committee wanted to see the draft legislation before it was passed on to council. So?
I do recall hearing that. So, do you wanna make a motion to? Remove that from the agenda and then discuss it at the Thursday night committee meeting?
And if it's removed from the agenda? I mean, it shouldn't even have been on the agenda to begin with.
If I may, I did send out an email to all of the Health and Safety Committee for both of the repeal of this one and then also the traffic control map updates. There were two separate emails. Brandon had sent them to me, and I had taken it upon myself to send it out to everyone. I don't know if anyone else can speak to receiving that email.
I move to pull proposed ordinance number 23-2025 and refer it back to the Health and Safety Committee.
I'll second that.
Mrs. DeShawn has made the motion, Ms. Sherrick has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Did you wanna do the same thing for the 24, Vicki, or are you fine with that one being on there? 24-2025?
Yeah, because our committee didn't ask for it to be? Not placed on the agenda? And didn't request that the legislation be given to the committee first? I'm not recalling that, because I know, Erin, you were, I believe, the one who made reference to how at times, the drafts, if we don't see them before, then they go right to council. Sometimes things are missed, or what have you.
I agree with you, Vicki. I think they should all go to the committees first. So do you wanna make the motion to send that one? Pull that one too?
No. I mean, the committee didn't ask for that, so I, just as the committee chair, am not gonna take it upon myself to make that decision. I just asked for 23-2025 to be pulled because the committee? Made that stipulation.
So you're fine with the 24-2025 being on here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other issues with the, any of the other ones?
I have no problem with them being on the agenda.
Okay. We will continue then where we left off with the consideration of the proposed legislation for the first time. I'll let the council clerk.
Proposed ordinance 24-2025, traffic control map update to South Sandusky Avenue. Amending the traffic control map and file, and file established by section 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Besire's, Ohio, to provide henceforth that there shall be, that there shall henceforth be two driving lanes on South Sandusky Avenue from Marion Road to Beale Avenue, with north and southbound left-turn lanes at Southern Avenue and a southbound left-turn lane at Beale Avenue. Proposed ordinance 25-2025, it's amending ordinance 12-2023, which is the minimum staffing for the fire department. Amending and supplementing sections 135.02 and 1.35.03 entitled controlled by Service Safety Director and powers of fire, fire chief respectively, under chapter 135 entitled Fire Department, under title 5 entitled, title 5 entitled administrative, under part 1 entitled Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Besire's. Proposed ordinance 26-2025, it's marijuana zoning, or the establishment of Besire's Codified Ordinance 1197. An ordinance amending and supplementing part 11 of the Besire's Codified Ordinances entitled Planning and Zoning Code and creating chapter 1197 entitled Authorized Locations for Adult Use of Medical Marijuana Facilities, under title 11 entitled Additional Zoning Requirements of the Codified Ordinances, Codified Ordinances of the City of Besire's, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 215-2025, it's the TIRC abatement. A resolution hereby accepting the community reinvestment area tax abatement recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council, or the TIRC, for a period ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution number 216-2025, it's Doug Wilson Memorial Plaque. The following resolution enacted by the city of Besire's, Crawford County, Ohio.
Any motion to accept these as a first review? Ms. Sherrick has made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It is passed. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Anybody wanna come to the podium? Okay, seeing none. Did you have anything, Vicki?
I have some observations I would like to make on some of the draft legislation.
Okay, you have the floor.
First off? Ordinance 24-2025? As far as what the purpose of the legislation is for? I'm totally? Fine with it. There's just some? Verbiage left out, which? Again, it's my observation. I am no longer making suggested revisions. I am just going to state that this is what I am observing, as I have reviewed the legislation, and whatever the council or committee chooses to do, that is up to them. So I don't know if you're wanting to hear?
Yes, give us your input, Vicki.
All right, the caption for ordinance 24-2025? If you go to the third line? You will see the word henceforth. That's already been stated once before. To provide henceforth, that there shall henceforth. Pardon? Okay, excuse me, fourth line. That's, again, just an observation. Section 2? Second line? It states, well, I'll just read, "That the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Besire's, Ohio, shall only alter the driving lanes aforementioned." And the word "and," in my observation, I think should be inserted. And erect only those authorized, and this verbiage has been omitted, authorized traffic control signals and devices? As are necessary. That verbiage was omitted.
So traffic control signals?
Traffic control signals and devices.
Okay, was that all you had on the 24-2025?
Correct.
Anything on the 25-2025?
Yes. This legislation has been prepared as a non-emergency, so as non-emergency, we need to have a majority of all members elected thereto concurring. We have listed 2/3. Under section 1? The third line? We need to? Okay. Again, observation. The word administrative? Is incorrect. That chapter is titled Fire Department. The fifth line? The word Fire Department is incorrect. That title? Is actually? Titled administrative. In other words, if you compare section 1 to the caption? They don't match. Then, under section 1, under 135.03? While we're changing the other? It's titled Powers of Fire Chief? Not Powers of the Fire Chief? So the word "the" is?
The word "the" is in there.
And the word "the" should not be in there. If you look at the? Well, if you go to 135.02? We'll double-check that. Okay, 135? Or 135.03? Thank you, Clarissa. 135.03, according to the codified ordinances, is entitled Powers of Fire Chief. And I, I, again, it's just an observation. If this is what it says in the codified ordinance? In my opinion? That's how we should title it in the legislation.
Now, this, we'd already had it once before before us, and it got sent back to committee. So? I guess? When this was at the last committee meeting, I'm wondering in my mind, why wasn't these issues addressed then?
Well, let's see here. How do I go about explaining that? Ah, let's see, the first draft that I received, or that the committee received on March 31st? I then gave my suggested revisions? And in those suggested revisions? I had? Made? The suggested revision of? A majority should be 2/3. I also had pointed out that where it said Fire Department, it was to state administrative. Now, as far as where it says administrative, is to be Fire Department? Nothing was referenced about that, because in the draft that we received? That was correct, but for some reason? Drafts that we've been getting since? They didn't follow that draft? And it's identified incorrectly.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Vicki, but this is your committee?
Yes.
So, I mean?
And your point being by that comment?
Well, my point is, I mean, who's? You know, the, I think the council has relied too heavily on? The law director just to do everything for them? The committees can actually write their own legislation.
Legislation supposed to be done by the law director? Like, that's in our?
All he legally has to do, and this is Rob Ratliff's own words, is approve legislation as to form. You could write something, and he looks at it and says, yep? It's approved to form. So?
So then, are you stating that, because, because I know the comment has been made a couple times, that? You know, Mr. Gobrik is a law director, and I, I understand that totally, and that? We should respect what he has prepared and not offer any revisions?
Who said that?
No.
Nobody said that.
That's the exact opposite of what I'm saying.
No, I'm not saying you said that.
Nobody said that.
Not up here.
I never said that to you.
I didn't say that you did, I said somebody said it, and it's not someone that's up here.
I appreciate your comments. I just don't like having it out in front of 12,000 people.
Well? And I know that comment's been made as well, that? And, and I've tried that, I've tried the emails. Just as I pointed out, I did an email and said, here are my suggested revisions. But yet, those suggested revisions weren't followed, and the legislation is still? Incorrect. In other words, I'm still pointing out the same thing that I pointed out before in an email.
I decided to make some changes and not others.
Okay? Okay.
And, and may I have a question?
Mrs. Sherrick, or Ms. Sherrick?
So, how many of these really should go back to committee prior to being, being passed?
I think 2020, 25-2025 should, because you guys referred it wrong again.
Because, what, what was that?
You guys referred it wrong again.
What?
What do you mean, you referred it wrong?
Or, you made the motion for the legislation wrong. Per our email, you were questioning why it wasn't an emergency, you guys didn't request it as an emergency, so I didn't make it as an emergency, which is why I forgot to take out the 2/3, but this one's not an emergency, because when I did it right, because you guys made the motion wrong, I got bitched at, because it wasn't exactly how it was.
I made the motion correctly, as I wished. I, I purposely did not make it an emergency.
Okay.
All right, so can I make a motion to have this sent back to committee, please? Are there any more that should be sent back? That you see, Vicki, with major corrections like that?
Ms. Sherrick has made a motion to send 25-2025 back to Health and Safety Committee.
Well, if it's not an emergency, then we can't really have an executive session, so.
Again, there's a motion.
I'm waiting on a second to Ms. Sherrick's motion. Okay, then, Ms. Sherrick's motion dies from lack of second. Anything else on the other legislation, Vicki?
You know what, there is? But? I, I guess I'm questioning, and, and I'm gonna try to remain calm here, but again, I'm back to the, you know, I'm damned if I do? Or I'm damned if I don't? If I bring my suggested revisions, or now my observations? It's like, huh. Well, now it's wrong. But then, if I don't bring them, it's like, well, Vicki, why didn't you catch that? Why didn't you bring that to our attention? So I'll tell you why. I'm making my decision right now. I will vote on the legislation, if, if the legislation is prepared wrong, in my eyes? And I have documents to support, you know, why it should read the way I feel it should read? I will go with the legislation that's presented, and I will vote accordingly, because again, as I mentioned before? I am not going to approve? Legislation? That I know? Is not prepared correctly. And I'm getting a little aggravated at some of the comments? And in simulations, and, oh, I knew you were gonna complain about that, so I changed it.
Point of interest?
Well, Vicki's not happy.
What's going on, Ms. Slater?
I am frankly tired of it on both accounts, because it is inappropriate to have what I see as a conversation that does not have to be an open council and taking 20 to 30 minutes of our time. I also offer to facilitate a conversation between the two of you to prevent this, because you guys are going to have to act like adults, and we're going to have to get this done. And Vicki, I appreciate everything you've done and everything you do for this. And to me, this looks like a communication breakdown issue. I confirmed with the law director that he was willing to have that conversation, and you told me that you weren't. So, there's no way to come, if you can't come to the table and be open and have a conversation on how you would like to present the information, how the edits can be done with both of your guys' schedules, then this will continue to happen for the next seven months, and I'm not going to...
But the edits that I'm looking at, and I'm probably going to make certain council people upset, but why am I the only ones catching these errors? And how can you not know what type of legislation requires an emergency? An emergency legislation, does it require two-thirds, or does it require a majority? The, what I'm pointing out is things that all you have to do is go to a book, and it tells you, Title V is entitled this. You read. But that's not happening.
Mr. Myers, you had something?
Yeah, um, when she's done, I would like to request a five-minute recess.
I'm done.
Um...
I'll second that motion. I thought it was a motion.
It was.
Mr. Myers had requested for a five-minute recess, and it was seconded by Ms. Slater. Is there any objection to this by, or should we accept it by unanimous consent? Okay, we are into recess at 8:32 for five minutes. Okay, we're back from the recess at 8:36 PM. And at this point, I would like to ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Point of order. I believe we have to have a motion to change our agenda, to move the executive session.
Okay, Mr. Myers, I'll entertain a motion to move up the executive session on the agenda up to the point of right now.
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Slater seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
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 All opposed. And then, I'd also, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session per Ohio Advice Code 121.22, G3 and G4.
I'll second.
Mr. Myers has made the motion. Ms. Slater has seconded. Roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Maritz is absent. Sharrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Okay, we are going into executive session at 8:37 PM. We are out of executive session.
Negative, sir.
We are coming back, okay, we need to vote.
I would like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Point of order. Should we do a suspending the rules?
Okay, am I ruling this point of order? No, there's no suspending the rules to come out of the executive session, so we're back to Mr. Myers's making of a motion to come out of executive session. Ms. Sharrick has seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn is an absent. Slater?
Yes.
Maritz is absent. Uh, Sharrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Okay, we're out of executive session at 10:18, and just for the record, Vicki walked out of the executive session and is no longer with us. I'd like that to be recorded in a minute.
This evening.
This evening.
She's no longer with us this evening.
She's no longer present this evening.
She's no longer in this meeting anymore. Uh, so where were we at? We were at consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. We had read the first readings. Did we accept the first readings?
Yes.
We did accept the first readings.
We were at consideration of proposed...
Didn't, didn't Snow Street get kicked back, committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I ask for the public participation on the first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Mr. President?
What?
I was going to ask for a motion to table 2025 manpower until all council members are present.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Slater has made a motion to table the 12-2025 manpower. It has been seconded by Councilman Me. Is there any discussion? Well, then, I want to hand the gavel over, because I want to have some discussion, so here, Mr. Myers.
You have the talking stick.
Why are we tabling this? It was already tabled once before.
Because you personally said that everybody needed to be here to make their vote on it, and we are missing two members and not just one.
I feel like y'all are trying to just push this thing back till after the levy.
You wanted to make sure I was here.
You specifically stated that you agreed with me, and that you said, "I agree." I feel that all members should be here to vote on this, so for the record, we are aware of who voted how.
So, either we actually were worried about that, or it was a personal attack on one member. So, are you admitting to a personal attack, or do you want...
I've never personally attacked any member of council.
Well, that's very likely false.
Okay, I'm done with my discussion. I've said my piece about it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to table the legislation on manpower in a second. And there's any further discussion? All right, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Myers?
No.
DeShawn is absent. Slater?
Yes.
Maritz is absent. Sharrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
And me.
Yes.
That motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to return the gavel to the president.
So...
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Myers?
Yes.
Sean's absent. Slater?
Yes.
Maritz is absent. Sharrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
You have the talking stick.
Okay, so back to consideration of proposed legislation for a final time. We have, uh, Resolution 212-2025 Cruising with the Cops.
Proposed Resolution 212-2025 Cruising with the Cops, street closures, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Paris, Ohio to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show on Saturday, June 14th, 2025.
Any motion accepted as a final reading?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sharrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It has been accepted as a final reading. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time.
Greg Wood, 1125 Hellcrest Drive. I would like to make a point here that there was no public participation after the consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. That is a violation of council rules. I'm sure if you guys go back to tape, because I was sitting back there waiting, then you guys decided to go into executive session. There was no mention of public participation, or, don't get me wrong, but I don't think you guys, you accepted the readings of the consideration of proposed legislation for the first time, and it was never voted on.
We had a motion by Sharrick, a second by Myers, and a nay vote from Vicki.
Okay, then...
And then it was public participation, nobody reacted, and Vicki started her piece.
No, I was, I was coming up here, and I didn't get my say-so.
That's correct. I marked down that nobody participated, that Vicki did ask.
Took notes.
So, so basically, I'll make, I'll make my comment short and sweet. I think this council is beyond certain things, but I think the language of ordinances should be precise in what they're saying, and if a committee decides that they want the pervigence a certain way, that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Seeing none, referred back to originating committee is all of these except for the 12-2025 and the 23-2025. So, committee report on pending legislation, uh, health and safety.
Uh, well, health and safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 24-2025. Health and safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 25-2025, and health and safety is favorable to proposed Resolution 212-2025.
Uh, plating?
Uh, proposed ordinance 26-2025 Marijuana zoning, BCO 1197, plating is favorable.
Economic development?
Economic development is favorable to proposed Resolution 213-2025 TIRC amendments.
Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 214-2025.
Okay. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance, well, we might as well not have, because we don't have six members here, so... Okay, 26-2025 Marijuana zoning is held to...
First reading.
First reading. So, we are up to 212-2025. Do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution 212-2025?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sharrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sharrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn is absent. Slater?
Yes.
And Maritz is absent.
Okay, Resolution 212-2025 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Anybody have any? I'm not seeing any old and unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new and miscellaneous business. Mr. Me.
Mr. President, I'd like to add tiny homes to the plating. We currently don't have any legislation in B.S.A.R.
Um...
And that's a motion?
I'll second that.
I was going to do, too.
Uh, Mr. Me has made a motion to restore tiny homes to plating. It's been seconded by Mr. Myers. Is there... All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Tiny homes has been referred to plating. Any other new and miscellaneous business?
I would like to, oh, sorry, Mr. President, I'd like to request that we schedule a special council meeting on Thursday. I will, um, work on putting together a comprehensive list of all the things that we were not able to complete tonight, tomorrow morning with the council clerk, so that can be advertised with the 24-hour notice.
Uh, before or after the committee meeting?
Um, we'll decide that tomorrow, too, I think, but I think... That's what it just says, yeah.
I can be there at 4:30.
Of course.
You can be there, what time?
I can probably, I can probably leave a half an hour early.
Could you swing 4:45?
Like, 5, what time do you get off, 5:00 or 5:30?
5:30.
Oh, could you swing 5:00-ish?
Sure, I can probably...
Could you swing 5:00-ish to get it all?
Should you do 5:15 to give her a little bit of time to get here?
That's why I said "ish," yeah. 5:15?
If you can do 5, if you do 5:00, I'll, I'll take a 45-minute unpaid... It is what it is.
5:15, okay with you?
5:15.
I requested 5:15, and I'll work on a comprehensive list with the...
So, the, the advertising of the meeting, we'll have to ask specifically what legislations?
Yep, which is what I'll do tomorrow morning with that comprehensive list, and it'll be published with more than 24-hour notice.
Okay, is there any other new and miscellaneous business?
Wait, we have to, we don't have to vote on that, right?
No.
Uh, yes, tax, hotel tax, I'd like to refer that, the bed tax, to economic development. Maybe economic development or finance?
Economic development.
Economic development.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Slater has made a motion to refer the bed tax to economic development. It's been seconded by Mr. Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The bed tax has been referred to economic development. Is there any other new and miscellaneous business? Mr. Goldrick.
I just remembered yesterday, I had a member of the court personnel come up to me, and they wanted to see if we could get a look at, or take a look at the parking situation up by the courthouse, specifically the elected officials lot. I thought it was going to be up to the county, but the county believes that it's up to us, because it's in city limits, so...
But it's county property.
It's county property.
That's what I said.
So, you're talking the, right next to the tracks there, right off of Walnut Street?
They also want to deal with the parking in the parking lot, and they also want to deal with the parking in front of the courthouse.
What do they want to do about it?
So, with the elected officials lot, they want to put telling signs up with the courthouse, the parking in front of the courthouse, they want to take away the 15-minute parking sign, and they want to potentially add more parking to, um...
So, for the stuff on Walnut Street that goes to Traffic Committee, for the stuff in their parking lots, it's private property, doesn't involve us?
It's 100% the county that's in their lot.
See, that's what I thought, yeah.
But the stuff on Walnut Street goes to our Traffic Commission.
I guess we can have that discussion when it gets, when it gets there.
Should we refer to our Traffic Commission?
I would love for you to do...
I'd like to make the referral to, uh, parking on Walnut Street between the railroad tracks and Mansfield Street to the Traffic Commission.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sharrick has seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And the, and the parking lot by the school.
No.
Um, they want to potentially add more parking spaces.
If it's in a parking lot, that doesn't involve us.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
It's like when you call the police, they say it's private property.
So...
It's private property.
By the school?
By what school?
Police told me this person didn't have a law degree.
What school are you talking about?
In fact, they did.
Oh, my God, that's very scary.
And they have way more authority than I do.
Now you're telling all people.
I have no comment on that.
Okay, so are we moving out of the...
I'm still on new miscellaneous business, if anybody has any. Um... Yeah, I'll just talk to Kaylee later about it. Um... Excusing of council members who are absent. We have two absent. Mr. Maritz had pre-notified us of the absence, and...
Saying he did?
Yeah, he did.
During the previous meeting, I had asked, and I was told no.
Maritz did. Hickman and Pinkhouse.
And Mr. Pinkhouse.
For public hearing, yeah.
I stand corrected. It's late, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Um, yeah, Mr. Maritz said, he notified me actually quite some time ago of this absence.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Maritz.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, roll call vote. Oh, Mr. Myers made the motion to excuse Mr. Maritz. Ms. Slater seconded. Now, roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn's absent. Slater?
Yes.
Maritz is absent. Uh, Sharrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Okay, and now we have the absence of Councilwoman DeShawn.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. DeShawn.
I'll second.
Uh, Ms. Sharrick has made a motion to excuse Mrs. DeShawn. Mr. Hickman has seconded that motion. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Myers?
No.
Uh, DeShawn is absent. Uh, Slater? Uh, Slater?
No.
Uh, Maritz is absent. Sharrick?
Yes.
Uh, Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
No.
Okay, we have, uh, two votes to excuse, three votes to not excuse. So, Councilwoman DeShawn's absence is not excused. Um, referrals.
Appropriations for the State Fire Marshal Equipment Grant to finance tiny homes to plating and bed tax to economic development.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Ms. Sharrick has made the motion. Ms. Slater has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned at 10:34 PM.